I call to order the Maplewood City Council Work Session Meeting on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. Do we have? Madam Clark Scheit with us?
Mr. Reese? I'll call the roll. Are you looking for the roll call?
Sorry, say that again?
I said I can call the roll. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley? Councilmember Fockingham?
Here.
Mayor Canapra?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Mayor Canapra, Coramis Gray.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to excuse Councilmember Crossley?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Crossley?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Agenda Setting Resolution Discussion.
So mayor and council members, I put this together based on the last discussion when we were all together. And tried to the best of my ability to capture all the relevant key points. And so there are five sort of rules that are listed there, chronologically, one through five. And the resolution for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Reese, and thank you and Attorney Graves for drafting this for our consideration and discussion. The only change that I'd like to discuss is on item four. The first sentence. Where it says, "In consultation with the mayor." I would just like that to be either and. Or something to that effect. So it's the city manager and the mayor that's working together. Did anyone else have any? Suggestions or discussion that they'd like to have?
I had two. I would propose adding a new number five, which says, "If an item is properly requested to be placed on a council meeting or work session agenda..." Oh, I'm sorry. "If an item that is properly requested to be placed on a council meeting or work session agenda is not placed on the next scheduled council meeting or work session agenda, after the request is made, the requesting party/parties shall be notified at which future council meeting or work session it will be placed on the agenda." Just so you know, if, you know, it's on the next one. And then, and I can send this to you in an email if you would like, Mr. Reese and Ms. Graves. If people are okay with it. And then the, and then a new number six, which is five, a little bit modified, which just says, "Once the requesting party/parties are notified of the council meeting or work session at which their requested item will be placed on the agenda, such items shall not be removed from such agenda without informing the requesting party or parties and notifying them of which next scheduled work session or council meeting their item will be placed on the agenda." Just so that if it was on an agenda and it gets moved, they then know the next agenda it will be placed on.
I think for me, I don't have any objection to it. It just seems like we're saying the same thing twice. I think I may need to just look at it in writing.
Yeah, I can send it to everyone in writing. I thought about this. So, yeah.
Yep.
I think the difference is just that if it's, the first one's kind of saying, if it's not going to, when you request it, if it's not going to be on the next meeting, you guys will let that person know when it will be. And then if we sort of have an established agenda, say you said, oh, it'll be on the next meeting, and then it changes, that when you tell them it changes from there, you tell them which then meeting it will be on. If that makes sense. But I'll send it in writing.
All right. Thank you. Any additional discussion? All right. Then I am going to move on. Actually, you know what? Before I do, I'd like to put this Agenda Setting Resolution Discussion on the next work session. Is that okay? With everyone, just so we can discuss it again, okay, with Councilmember Schmidt's additions?
All right.
We have a next scheduled work session?
I would think it would be September 28th.
I don't have that on my calendar. So if we are setting work sessions, we need to make that calendar items.
Is this something that really needs a work session? I mean, if we agree with the changes, basically, is there a need for a work session regarding this particular item?
For, I would like to discuss it in a work session because then I'd get an opportunity to see Councilmember Schmidt's additions. And then we'll have an opportunity to discuss it. That's, I mean, that's the only time that we'll be able to discuss it, is in a work session or a council meeting.
So, and I was kind of with Councilmember Wood, we could perhaps, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but one thought is to put it on the next meeting and then, if people have a lot of changes, you can either amend it before you vote on it, or you could, you know, table it. But yeah, that's fine with me.
If you want, couldn't you like send it an email? And if we can't respond about anything by email, then at least we would have it at the next meeting. You know, like you're saying, that we could discuss it in a meeting, that it really wouldn't have to be a work session item.
So, I think I'm understanding Councilmember Wood, what you're saying is that we may not need to have a work session on the 28th, just put this on the council meeting?
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, if that's all we have for a work session, I, you know, I don't, I'm not aware we were having one on any other reason at this point, but you know.
Yeah, and I will get an understanding of how work sessions work. But, okay, that's fine. I just want to be able to discuss any additional changes that we have before we vote. That's all. All right.
So can I just, for clarification, do you want me to send something out in advance that captures the changes that both the mayor you suggested and what Councilmember Schmidt? And send something out in advance of the 28th?
Yes, please.
And, Mr. Reese, I would suggest that you put that as part of the packet, the city council meeting packet, so that the public has notice of the, what's being considered.
Okay.
You could do a memo and says, states, these are the potential amendments that the council may consider, something like that.
Okay.
All right. Item number five, Board and Commission Nomination Process Discussion.
So, I had sent everyone a memo earlier today, and I apologize for the late timing of it, and I don't expect anyone to have read it. We have a lot of stuff on our council meeting work session tonight. And so I think this is a topic that people might need to think about a little bit too, before we discuss. I think what my memo tried to do is, we've had a lot of discussions over the last couple of years about sort of two different things. One is the actual appointment process and application process. And then the other is that our ordinances, like, have a lot of different language and different ordinances, and they're not all consistent with each other. And so, you know, I tried to just kind of walk through, you know, the background on what we did last fall. And then there was some discussion this spring, you know, that there's language in the charter about how that appointment process works. And I couldn't find it. So if someone knows where it is, like, that would be great to know. But I think, I think we're just sort of at this place where no one really knows what process we're going to use now. And so it would be helpful to go back through it and figure it out. And then at the same time, clean up our ordinances so that there isn't this type of confusion, because I think they were all passed at different times. Some don't really make sense, like they use different language to describe the same things. Some say that people are appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council. Some say people are appointed by the council. So, anywho, I just, I think too, before we do that, I think there's like a legal question. It's like, I don't know if Attorney Graves can confirm whether or not there is language in the charter about how this process is supposed to work. Because if there is, like, that is, I just think there's like a lot going on here. So, you know, I would propose if people want, I mean, if you want to read through that and kind of think about this, and then we could set a different work session where we have a little bit more time. I think it's going to take a while. And discuss, but I'm open to everyone's thoughts on that.
I would like to make a proposal. I need to, we have vacancies on some boards and some commissions, and I would like to make appointments to those board commissions. And so what I propose is that we continue with the application process that is currently ongoing. And then I look at those applications. I choose from those applications. I submit them to you all. You all get an opportunity to review those applicants. And those applicants get an opportunity to speak on their behalf to the council. So should you have any questions for those applicants, then you can ask them. And then at a later meeting, they would be placed on the agenda to be appointed and for your vote. Councilmember Schmidt, I know you said you were not able to find in the charter the language that says the mayor appoints and the council approves. I have been able to find it, and I would like for Attorney Graves, if you could direct us to it as well. But that's just my proposal for now, because what you are pointing out to us, Councilmember Schmidt, is that we do need to do some work to make sure that ordinances are aligned with our charter. But I don't want to wait for us to get that done when we have these vacancies.
So it sounds like then we would again not be using the process that we set out last fall, correct?
Can you tell me what that process is?
Yeah. So basically, we would all review the applications and sit down together and determine, you know, which candidates we felt were the strongest. And then as a group. And then if you wanted to add like a component of them then coming, and we could all ask them questions. I think that, I think what we did basically was take a two-step process and made it one, since the two-step process does also factor in council input. So I guess, I feel like the thought process was, it was nice for all of us to sit down together because we had that many different perspectives and thoughts about it. And it also then doesn't create a situation where
She froze. Nasty storm.
Yeah, it's really storming out there.
Wait for Councilmember Schmidt to join us again. Think I give her about a minute or two. And then if she's not able, because I wonder if her electricity was cut off. If she's not able to rejoin us, we'll just, we'll circle back to this item.
Yeah, it looks like a couple other people have disappeared on us.
Yeah. It's them.
Want to just take a few minutes and just kind of wait for them, or?
Yes.
I'll be right back.
Okay. Hello?
Well, I texted Jenny. She did lose her internet. She didn't lose her power, but she lost the internet. So, I don't know.
Councilmember Wood, did she give you any more information?
No, I just asked her if she had lost her power because of the storm. She said she just lost her internet. And I figured she's busy trying to, you know, figure it out. So I didn't ask any other questions.
Okay. We can circle back to that item number five.
Okay.
She did just text me and said that she is not able to connect to Zoom right now. So, but it looks like her internet's back.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Schmidt, once we lost you, and then I think we also lost Councilmember Phillips, we just had a bit of a break. So we are still on item number five. Do you want to finish what you were saying?
I think I was, I think I was finished. Thank you.
Councilmember, or, excuse me. So to answer Councilmember Schmidt, your question about the process being different, then yes, yes, the process would be different.
I guess, could I ask why, like, why it would be different from what we had decided last fall?
Because last fall, the mayor that our city had was fine with doing it that, the way that you all did it. And I don't agree. I like to follow, I want to follow the charter.
So I guess my question, this is maybe a question for Attorney Graves, is that, you know, it seems like the only act that constitutes appointment by the mayor was the act of putting that resolution on ordinance, because, or on the agenda, because that is what's been happening, like, since I've been here. Was the formal appointment has been, the resolution is drafted. So I guess to the extent this body was not doing it appropriately before, then that's dang it. Oh. All right. It's a rager out there. Um, I guess that's my question for you, Attorney Graves, then what act constitutes appointment?
Yeah, it can be via the resolution that's approved by the city council. So I think we talked about this earlier in the year, which was that the ordinances say that there are appointments by the mayor with the approval of the city council. So the mayor would, if we're following the letter of the, or, you know, based, if you're looking at an ordinance which requires a point, appointment, the mayor with the approval of the city council, then the mayor would, absent some other process being agreed to, choose the person, and then the city council would either agree or disagree. So the city council's input could be voting against the resolution.
But, so the way we did it though last fall was, would also be an appropriate process under that as long as that resolution was, or would it not be?
So if the mayor wants to receive the input of the city council before the mayor makes appointments, he or she can certainly do that. That's not inappropriate.
That wouldn't violate the ordinance?
No, because the mayor would still be the one that's making the choice with the
Resolution.
City council having input. But there's nothing that requires the mayor obtain the input prior to making an appointment. And if that's the case, then the city council's approval is either to agree or disagree with the appointment.
And I guess, you know, I guess, I guess, I guess what I understood this body to be doing last fall was to be trying to engage in a process that, you know, had more input and like, and so, you know, there are still five people on this council who felt that that was like a more open and inclusive way. And maybe, you know, my memo touches on this, maybe people have changed their minds. But I guess if it's, if it's not in the charter and it is set by ordinance, then this group can also by majority determine what that process looks like. Is that accurate? If there's nothing in the charter requiring that, right, and it's strictly based on ordinances, then
You could amend the ordinance.
You could amend the ordinances to use whatever process, even if it's what, you know, something, some hybrid or one or the other. Okay, I guess.
As long as the day, the city council is the one that's collectively approving.
Correct.
Yes.
And I guess, I guess my question is, Mayor Canapra, like, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I guess I'm just trying to understand, you know, what, what benefit, I guess, do you feel is gained by utilizing that process over receiving the collective input as a whole upfront? And I guess, that's just what I'm trying to understand from you.
I want to receive your input. I even, when we went through this process in, or when we went through this in June, I asked you all for your input. So it's not like the council doesn't have an opportunity to give that to me. I would like to be able to make the decision and then submit that to you all, for you all to tell me your thoughts. I'd also like for you all to have the opportunity to tell me, I think that you can, you should consider this person, you know, for, for this appointment. But for me, what it comes down to is, I would like to make the decision. And I think that's, that's where we have a differing view. The process that you described to me, you're describing a collective, whereas the process that I'm describing to you is, I am making the decision to appoint this person, and I'm submitting that person for you to approve.
So it's just, it's simply a matter of you want to be the one to make that choice rather than make it with us? Is that what I'm, like, that's sort of the bottom?
If you would like to phrase it that way, I wouldn't phrase it that way. I would phrase it as, I have the authority by charter to do this, and I would like to continue doing it. Because from, up until me, I guess maybe our last mayor, he agreed to this after what maybe majority of his time as mayor, doing it the way that has been done prior to him. He changed it. And I'm just saying to you all, I would like to continue doing it the way that the charter allows with the additions that have been created, which is the application process. And then also allowing you all to ask questions of these people and for them to respond and advocate on their behalf.
And we would have an opportunity this time, unlike last time, to do this prior to the meeting at which they're voted on?
Correct. And you would have had, the council would have had this opportunity last time if we could have communicated with each other.
I just a point of clarification. What openings do we currently have?
I am aware of openings, two openings on the Park and Recreation Board. One opening on the Special Business District Tax Advisory Board. And then that is all that I'm aware of.
We still have one on sustainability too.
The business.
I was, yeah, sustainability has a vacancy.
Who, was there a, did someone quit the Special Business District? Because I don't believe we received notification of that one.
I didn't know it was either one of the last two.
They did, it was before I started, because any notification that I get, I will pass that along to you.
Excuse me, I actually was in my office. was in my office probably about a month ago, and while I was there, um, uh, Madam Kirk Schite just told me in passing that we had a resignation on the Special Business District Tax Advisory Board.
What about the sustainability? I didn't hear anything about that either. Is that recent, or?
Sustainability, oh, you know, that's not recent, Councilmember Wood, we've had that, um, vacancy for a while now.
Okay, I thought it was cool. At one, the last I looked, I looked at him the other day, and I still, that could be my error. I just wondered, because I didn't see there was anybody. Okay.
So if the, um, ordinances are, I guess, Attorney Graves, if you can clarify, because the, the document that council membership put together today indicated for each of the boards and commissions, what the language is in those ordinances um, as to what the appointment process is. So if that is the case, then is that what we should be going by until they are changed?
Yes.
So, for instance, under the Park Board, now that indicates that is Chapter thirty-six, Article two, and that one says, appointed by city council.
And, but there, and so then the problem, and this is why I alluded in my memo, that there, I think, is some legal review needed here, because I think Councilmember Phillips is pointing out, like, there are in, the inconsistencies, there is a general ordinance that maybe is applicable, but that even among itself contains different language, so. You know, if the goal is to follow the law, then I think we need some guidance on what the law actually says, I think is where we're at.
It seems clear to me, it seems like there's just different language for different positions. And I'm comfortable with that. Unless we just want to be consistent, for consistency's sake, I don't know if Park Board is appointed by city council, because there's a reason for that, or if it's just lack of detail when that was written. But most of them are fairly clear.
But I think the greater point is they're, they're different among them, and so it's like, what, you know, if we're, if we're trying to be in compliance, then I think we need some guidance as to what compliance means, is what I kind of hear. Um, there's also, the Sustainability Commission was created by a resolution, and it, it just, it doesn't give any guidance as to what you do after those initial seven people are, you know, and that one just says the mayor. So like, that's what I'm saying, like, this is all over the map here. And I think it's because they were all passed at different times, and there was no, um, no one was really tying them together.
So what I will offer, Councilmember Schmidt, is that, um, current, you should follow the, the current, um, ordinances as they're written. Um, and to the extent that the council wants to, uh, make them consistent with one another, we can certainly do that. You, you could ask for a review of those ordinances, and we could put something together for the council's review and approval. Um, to the extent you all would want us to do that, we would need to know what, obviously, what procedure you would like us to follow, and whether that is, whatever that is, whether that's the mayor with the city council, whether that's the city council. Uh, and, and at the end of the day, it's going to be what a majority of the council wants to do.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Um, and that, and that's kind of why I was saying, I think it'd be helpful for us all to like, kind of look at this and think about what our thoughts are before we discuss it, because I think that would make it a more focused conversation. Um, and we're also missing a council member tonight too, so, um, but that's up to everybody else as well.
But it seems like we have parallel work. I, I, I feel like we need to get these people in these vacant seats and get those filled, and I, and my recommendation and my thinking would be, we use the language as written and just do that. And then if we want to dive into this and, and get them consistent or not, I think, you know, we could look at each one individually and see if, if that's what we want, and do that, um, as a, as a separate issue. I think, you know, we run a risk of really tying things in knots if we try to conflate the redoing of the language with the people we're trying to get in right now.
Yeah, I wasn't proposing that. I was, yeah, suggesting that we don't have this conversation till we've thought about it more. But I, I agree, I, and they've already been thinking for a while, so it doesn't make sense to put it off.
Any additional discussion?
Where does this leave us?
I think that, um, we are going to have some time to review Councilmember Schmidt's, uh, memo. And then I don't, you all tell me, I can, I can work with Mr. Reese to put this on a council, uh, meeting, or a work session. What would you like? But at, at this time, I'm, I'd like for us, if, if we don't have any more discussion, or even if we do, I'd like for us to table this, so we can, um, make sure we have enough time to get to all of our items. Uh, so you all tell me what, what you would like.
I think it makes sense at a work session, not at a, a meeting.
Okay.
And ideally, if it's a work session that doesn't have five other things on it, so that we can focus on on this item, which is clearly something that we all need to talk about.
Agreed.
May I just weigh in that if you would like, um, anything specific from us, from the city attorney, you would let us know ahead of time.
Thank you.
All right. So we will see that in a future work session, uh, and please review the memo Councilmember Schmidt um, distributed, and then, of course, please make any, any notes, additions, subtractions you would like to see that. All right.
May I recommend that that, um, memo be part of the next work session packet when it is on the agenda? So that the public can see what, um, what you all are looking at.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number six, Human Services Commission ordinance. Any discussion?
I think it looks good.
I have a couple things, um, let me in my notes. For consistency's sake, for section two dash four oh one, the, the first sentence says appointed by mayor and city council. Again, there's that, we're within the same thing, the same discrepancy. I think you probably want to use the same language that was added in the sentence, a couple sentences later, which is by the mayor with the approval of the city council. So that they read the same way, because those say two different things to me. And then the, the third sentence, um, sorry, I had to figure out which one. It says, I, I wasn't quite following it. It says, selection of members will be made so as to encourage representation of individuals with an interest in, which makes it sound like the people in the community are the people who have an interest in understanding, but I think maybe it says, it should say, um, to encourage application by individuals with an interest in an understanding, or appointment of individuals with an interest in an understanding. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Eight, um, and then I would add who preferably have experience. Um, add who before that would be my suggestion. And then the last sentence in that, maybe someone could explain to me. I, I have trouble following what that means, because aren't any vacancies? I just don't understand what that means. It says vacancies shall be unexpired terms only. But if you have a vacancy, you would follow this process regardless?
No, it's saying that appointments to fill vacancies that will only, so if there's a vacancy that's comes up one year into it, an appointment is just until the end of that term.
Oh, so, okay, so it's saying appointments to fill vacancies that the appointment will last.
Unexpired term, maybe the word for.
Okay, yeah, that's why I, I was reading it as like what we did, so that's why I was confused. So it's saying the appointment we would make would be for that rest of that term. Okay, I, I get that. That was, okay. And then I guess, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna, um, potentially add, uh, I, I was, appointments to fill vacancies shall be to fulfill unexpired terms only, might make that more clear.
Okay.
And then I guess I just had a overarching question. So the way I read this is that it's now nine appointees plus the other two people, so there are eleven people on this. Right? So I guess my question is, is, and it says, it says at least three must be residents, so you know, six seems like a lot of people to try to get from other places, but the idea is that if you can't find six non-residents, those six people could be residents, right? The way this is worded?
Yes.
Okay, so if we have a problem finding people or keeping people who aren't residents, then that's how you would just, you could appoint someone. Okay. It just seems like a lot of people for a commission, and I was just curious if we, I know we, I think it was based off Columbia's, is that right? I just was curious if we had any insight into like smaller communities that do it, if that's, they use that large a number, or are there not any?
There are not any.
Alright, okay.
I mean, it looks like we are going to be the first.
Okay, alright.
And I, I just want to let you all know all nine could be from Maplewood. That, that really could be a possibility. So I don't want you to think like, oh, we'll only have these three, and then we're purposefully looking for people, um, outside of Maplewood. I, I just understand, yeah, okay, as long as you understand that.
Yeah, and I was just thinking of the problem of like, if people aren't, you know, if you're getting people who are in specific industries, like, you may have more turnover, you know, if they're alive, like, this is, they don't necessarily maybe have the same investment as a resident, so, but it's nice, because in their place, if you have that problem, you could appoint just a resident. Okay, cool. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any additional discussion? I'd like to, um, have those changes that we've discussed made, and then have that on our next city council agenda. So I just wanted to let you all know that if you all are good to go with this, then we will have the first and second reading on the twenty-eighth. All right. All right, final item on the agenda, uh, number, well, technically it's not the final one, but number seven, Equity RFP. So I'm going to ask for Mr. Reese, um, to assist in this discussion, because I know that we have a budget set aside, uh, that is twenty-five thousand dollars. And all of the, um, RFPs that we received are over that amount. And so, um, I would like to go ahead and discuss, uh, all of the RFPs that we received, but then also have you, have you give us comment and guidance, uh, because all of these are over budget. All right, um, so let's start with, I, the, the first one that I have in front of me is, uh, the Kaleidoscope Group LLC. And then I guess you all let me know, um, we had a scoring system. And so I followed that scoring system and gave it a score. Would you all like to discuss the score? Would you like to just discuss Kaleidoscope? Um, the floor is open for, for discussion.
Well, I, I, um, did vote for Kaleidoscope. I scored them, they were the, the highest score that I gave, because I felt like they give us, gave us more of what we were requiring. And it seems like they had a lot of experience with federal, state, and local governments. Um, and their engagement team consultants, they looked like they were expertise in, uh, local government. They were the only one that I really felt gave us a lot of, um, they gave us a lot of references and, uh, things that, uh, other, other cities that, they gave us names of other cities that they used, so uh, I just felt like they did the best job of presenting what we asked for.
I also scored Kaleidoscope the highest, um, along the, um, evaluation criteria that we had previously set. Um, and, uh, I appreciated that they actually looked at our budget, um, in order to develop their, their RFP, and, uh, as Councilmember Wood mentioned, um, I appreciated that they were, um, had the most experience dealing with government entities.
I agree, they were my highest as well.
I also have been my highest. I sort of had two tracks, which touches on what Mayor Knapper said earlier. It was like, um, I feel like we're in a position where it's, do you pick a less expensive, more condensed type of a, of a process, or do you sort of spread it out over several budget cycles and do a more in-depth? But they were my highest score overall as well, because I thought they took what we asked for and put it into enough, a plan that was affordable for us, and they seemed to hit on each of the things that we asked for, um, and also specifically mentioned municipal government experience, which no one else mentioned at all, or seemed to have in their experience. So, um, I, I also had them highest on mine as well, mostly because it fit also closer within the budget amount.
They are scored as the lowest for me. Um, and the reason was, I, I was concerned because I, okay, so let me back up. I did appreciate that they were cognizant of our budget, um, and I also recognized that they had experience with, uh, other governments and municipalities. Uh, my concern with Kaleidoscope is that there wasn't much discussion, uh, regarding anti-racism, and I am looking for that. Um, so that's why they were scored the lowest for me.
Is there, is there some value as a group in discussing sort of the, the first thing you talked about, which was the amount, you know, of some of these, and what, what we're willing to spend? And then, because I had another one I really liked, but you know, they were a hundred and seven thousand dollars, you know, so but it was three hundred and fifty-eight hours of work for a hundred and seven hour thousand, as opposed to thirty-four for a hundred. So that's to me where it's sort of, that's the question. What do, what are we willing to do?
That's why I wanted to have Mr. Reese really participate in this, because, um, I, I agree with you, the one that you just mentioned, that's the one that scored the highest for me, um, because to me, it seemed like they covered everything that you all had put in the RFP in addition Because to me, it seemed like they covered everything that you all had put in the RFP in addition to anti racism work. And so I was like, oh, but then it was over a hundred thousand dollars. So you and I, I I'm telling you, we were on the same page as far as, okay, so how long do we want to do this? Because I'm actually okay with it not being done in four months. Because it didn't take us four months to to get here. So, yes.
I mean, it took us four months just to get this RFP together and to hear. So I'm I'm with you. I I thought four months was unrealistic, honestly.
Yes. So so, Mr. Mr. Reese, would you jump on in regarding that?
Sure.
That matter of but.
Yeah, I think I think we did. We did budget twenty five thousand dollars. For what it's worth, the two proposals that have been discussed here so far are the two that I rank the highest. I actually ranked Kaleidoscope the highest, but second was Mayor, the firm that you just brought up and Councilman Schmidt brought up. So admittedly, I was somewhat, I was somewhat guided by by the budget and looking at what the firms could do. And I thought the Kaleidoscope tailored tailored their proposal to to Maplewood well, yeah, in that regard. So we certainly could, whoever we end up choosing, if we go down this path, we could certainly break it up. Again, we have twenty five thousand dollars. We could break it up and, you know, do something this budget cycle and do something the next budget cycle perhaps in in our negotiation with the firm. So that's 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 an option available to us.
Yeah, I mean, as a council, we can authorize whatever we see fit. Yeah, I mean, I I did like construct nets and and the only reason why they didn't score any higher was because of the cost. But I I've probably said this before, not tagging this problem will probably cost us more money in the long run anyway. So I'm I'm fine with, you know, doing a construct net style of of RFP, even if it's, you know, maybe we do the first part now and the first part of six months, you know, however, you know, we can, we can probably have that conversation with them too, to see if 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 that works for them as well. So but yeah, I mean, I'm I would be when I would definitely support approving going the way of accepting construction.
If we narrow it down to two, should we interview them before we choose?
I think it's good to interview them.
I I I may we be way out of left field here and excuse my ignorance, but are there other funding sources for this kind of work? It seems like the kind of thing that there would be money for out there in the world.
I'm sorry, you mean within our budget, council member?
Not not within our budget, but just, you know, I and I don't know. I don't know how this works. You know, my experience is a not for profit. So I, you know, and we're trying to fund these kind of things. We might you know, fund some of it directly out of a budget. We may go get grant money, you know, we'll we'll go get creative if we want to get something we can't afford. And you know, again, just to excuse my ignorance, but I don't know if those kinds of things are open to us.
I think in some cases, grant funding is available for a project like this. I think that would be pretty challenging.
Okay.
Direct about it.
Yep, that's perfectly fine.
So one one thing just to toss out there for the council to consider. You know, I I'd like for us, if we can, to have have a retreat sometime in the coming months. And that's not budgeting. So you know, one idea I have is out of this twenty five thousand dollars we have budgeted to this equity effort is if we don't spend all that this fiscal year is using a portion out of that for a retreat that I think having a facilitator would would help us have a constructive retreat. So that's I'll just toss that out for for reaction, but that's I'm trying to find money for a budget. That's a possible source. But it's not to take all the money out of out of this pot, but there this is the the largest pot of money that's available to us. So I was trying to find money that I can.
And you say you're trying to find money. I mean, you're just trying to find one of our budget buckets to put it in. We can, we could authorize the retreat out of the general fund without much ado. So and it would be worth worthwhile without dipping into this this particular bucket that looks like we may expand after some some interviews with some companies. So yeah, I I I mean, I have no problem. I'm a big fan of retreats for council. So anyway, my two cents.
Thank you.
So next up, do we even are the 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 top two for looks like the majority of us is either Kaleidoscope and or Constructnet? Do we just have Mr. Reese give him a call and set up a time to come chat with us at a you know, city council meeting or a work session? For next steps?
I could certainly arrange for that. What what does the council prefer? Do they prefer at a meeting or a work session? How would you like to proceed?
I think council meeting would probably be better, just so it's, you know, more in the public eye. You know, most people that attend these kinds of meetings usually tend to council meeting at the work session. So it'd be a benefit to them because inevitably at some point they'll be involved as well in this process. So.
I agree. I just want to make sure, though, that I I am, there's no assumption and I have not missed anyone regarding the conversation that we're having about the two companies. Because we've talked about Kaleidoscope, we've talked about Constructnet International. But if if some if another council member had had another consulting firm scored higher and they would like to discuss that, you know, the floor is yours. I don't I want everyone to be able to be heard on this. Okay, okay. So then I think we just have those two, then Kaleidoscope and Constructnet International. All right. And Mr. Reese, you have the next steps that council member Falkingham just described.
I do.
All right. Then I think we are good to go. Before we adjourn, though, I'd I'd like to flesh out a bit more what Mr. Reese just brought up about a retreat. And I just want to make sure I understand council member Falkingham. You're in support of a retreat. I'm I'm with you on that. I am too. And I guess, are you saying to take a look at the general fund to see if if we could support that? Or pay for that?
Yeah, that's what that's where we're come out of.
Okay.
I mean, if Mr. Reese could talk to our, you know,
cheap financial.
Oh, yeah, and figure out where it it could be, what fund it can be taken from. But if there isn't a special fund for it, then the general fund would be fine.
Okay, okay.
I think it would benefit everybody, including our constituents. So.
And I think many of us thought we budgeted for it, but clearly we didn't. So I think we're all in favor of it. We and we thought we already had it paid for. So we apologize.
All right, all right. Thank you all. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll see you at the city council meeting.